Buenos días a todos. Hoy es muy frío y un recordatorio de que el invierno se va a pasar en Costa. Y es el 20 de febrero, las 9 de la mañana. Y llamo a esta reunión a orden. ¿El tal Hopewell?
Presidente de la Comisión de la Cámara.
Presente.
Vicechef Gámez.
Presente.
M. Romero.
Presente.
M. O'Donnell.
Presente.
Bueno, tenemos una oración. Así que si todos se pueden sentar por nuestra devoción inspiradora de hoy. Me gustaría acoger a la señora Ellen Wood, quien es la que levantó los elementos y se fue todo el camino desde el norte de Costa. Ella vive en El Rito. Ella es una columnista y orador ganador de premios y orador inspirador. Y ella nos gustaría darle algunos palabras para empezar nuestra reunión. Gracias por estar aquí.
Gracias, señor presidente. Tengo que decir que estoy contenta de ser invitada a esta... ...para iniciar tu reunión esta mañana. Ustedes, comisioneros del condado, hacen una diferencia en la vida de nuestros... ...pueblos de nuestro condado. Y así también estoy muy contenta de ser invitada aquí. Quiero hablar de nuestra salud, de nuestra felicidad y de nuestro trabajo. Tienen mucho que ver con el enfoque de nuestros pensamientos. Y todos tenemos este chateo mental que pasa incesivamente. Y a veces no es tan positivo y a veces lo es. Y todos podemos hacerlo de forma continua. Y me gusta hacer eso con una serie de afirmaciones positivas cortas. Y decir que las afirmaciones positivas pueden dar un gran apoyo a nuestro día. Así que invito a todos ustedes a repetirme después. Hazlo de tu gusto.
Claro.
Bien. Repite después. Soy poderosa.
Soy poderosa.
Siento poder surgiendo a través de mi cuerpo.
Siento poder surgiendo a través de mi cuerpo.
Soy fuerte y sana.
Soy fuerte y sana.
Soy compasiva.
Soy compasiva.
Soy magnífica.
Soy magnífica.
Tú eres magnífica. Gracias y gracias por todo lo que haces por el pueblo de Taos, condado. Y espero muchísimas cosas de que sucedan hoy. Gracias.
Realmente aprecio eso. Gracias. Por favor, sean en pie y el tal Hopewell nos llevará a la oración.
Sí, voy a repetir mi oración. Le doy gracias a los ciudadanos de Estados Unidos de América. Y a la república por la que se encuentra una nación, un pueblo, individual, que siempre ha sido justa y honorable.
Gracias. Hola, Hopewell. Bien, el siguiente tema en la agenda, comisioneros, es la aprobación de la agenda. ¿Voy a aprobar? Tengo una motion en segundo para aprobar la agenda de la reunión de hoy, el 20 de febrero de 2018. ¿El tal Hopewell?
M. Romero.
Sí.
M. O'Donnell.
Sí.
M. Blankenhagen.
Sí.
Vicechef Gámez.
Sí.
Presidente de la Cámara.
Sí. El siguiente tema, los preocupados ciudadanos. Estamos contentos de ver a los ciudadanos en nuestra audiencia en cada reunión. Y si tienen algo que nos quieran hablar hoy, los invito a venir. Y les pido que mantengan sus comentarios de menos de cinco minutos. Si alguien quiere abordar la comisión en este momento, por favor, venga y indique su nombre para el registro.
Buenos días, jefe Hopewell, comisionado. Esperaba tener más tiempo para prepararme un poco para esta mañana. Es lamentable que el tema sobre el que voy a hablar haya salido a la luz debido a la parada del porfiral en un evento muy reciente de suicidios donde 17 personas murieron. Y más de una docena fueron heridas. Y luego otro acto violento involucrando a la juventud en el armario. Con esto, creo que en mi posición como comisionado del condado, es hora de tomar una postura en nuestra comunidad. Hablamos muchas veces sobre el Gorge Bridge y los suicidios y las terribles tragedias que sucedieron en un lugar tan hermoso. Cuando en realidad, para 2017, dos vidas fueron perdidas en ese río. Y luego teníamos nueve suicidios por encima que eran armarios en nuestra comunidad. Y numerosos otros actos violentos cometidos por personas que legalmente poseían armas. Pero tal vez no deberían. Estoy muy preocupado por lo que actualmente tenemos aquí en México para enfocarlo en un hogar y un lugar más cercano. Y específicamente dentro de nuestra comunidad de Taos condado. Muchas veces tenemos a los con enfermedades mentales o que están en algún modo en el radar de la policía, nuestro oficio de fiscalía o nuestros jueces. Es lamentable que a menudo veamos a estas personas declaradas incompetentes para estar en juicio. Mientras que entiendo que la salud mental necesita... ...lo que trate de la esfuerzo de la fiscalía. Lo que no me gusta es el hecho de que estas personas se resuelvan de nuevo a nuestra sociedad. No se mantienen hasta que sean incompetentes para ese juicio. Se reciben y se despiden de cargos. Y esto se ha vuelto muy preocupante para mí. Y creo que estamos operando bajo el tiempo como comunidad. Vine solo para hablar brevemente de esto. Y voy a desafiar a la comisión a unirme en mis esfuerzos, tal vez una resolución de la comisión. En algún modo, decir el sentimiento de la comisión, del condado, de esos otros funcionarios electos en cómo deseamos que nuestro estado tome más medidas apropiadas para encontrar ese equilibrio perfecto entre nuestros derechos de segundo mandato, que yo totalmente apoyo, y, sí, mantener esas armas peligrosas fuera de las manos equivocadas. No tengo esas respuestas, al menos no todas esas respuestas. Tengo mis pensamientos y los compartiré con la comunidad a través de nuestro documento, a través de documentos escritos y a la comisión, tal vez en forma de recomendación para una resolución que venga de la body. Con eso, supongo que no tengo más preguntas.
Solo para comentar, jefe, hubo algo que un estudiante hizo allí en Florida que hace mucho sentido para mí. Ella sabía que el arma estaba a su derecha, sabía que tenía que ir a la izquierda. El profesor le dijo que ponía sus bolsas traseras y corriera y ella paró. Y sabía que en su bolsa trasera había tres libros un pulgada y media anchos. Así que en su razonamiento, puso su bolsa trasera, pensando que eso sería algún tipo de protección para ella si se desplazara hacia atrás y escapara. Realmente hace mucho sentido. Hablé con el jefe de la APD sobre la posibilidad de incorporar eso en el plan. Y creo que quiero que ustedes solo piensen en eso y vean si les parece sensible. No van a parar con una pistola de 223, entiendo eso. Van a hacer algunas pruebas y actualizaciones para ver qué puede hacer. Puede ser algo, y ese estudiante llegó con el key to the moment. Y ha estado en mi mente desde entonces y creo que es algo... Porque fui a tu reunión y tuviste a todas las escuelas, lo cual fue muy impresionante, reunir a todos. Y realmente creo que podrías conseguir que tus oficiales hagan algún entrenamiento o algo y solo vean lo que hace. Puede hacer tanto diferencia si es lo que quiere, si es para salvar la vida. Y creo que deberíamos incorporar eso en el plan. Así que solo quiero que le presten atención.
Gracias, presidente. Gracias, jefe, por estar aquí. Ya sabes, es como en Florida, también es una cuestión de tener a tu departamento animando a los ciudadanos que tienen preocupaciones por encima de ellos. Y luego tener algún tipo de respuesta establecida en el departamento. Y ese es el lugar, no debería ser, sí, en lo que respecta a nuestra respuesta. Es el detenerlo de su suceder. Y ya sabes, vimos incluso en la Asociación de México, el evento hace unas semanas, así como en Florida, vimos muchos de esos vidas de esas ocasiones. Usualmente, como hemos compartido. Mi preocupación se centra más en, de nuevo, ese equilibrio de proteger nuestros derechos de segundo mandato, mantener esos, cualquier tipo de peligro que salga de las manos de aquellos que no están conservando.
Jefe, ¿cuáles son las escuelas públicas de Taos, incluso las escuelas de charlas? ¿Es que están haciendo lo que están haciendo?
En realidad, tuvimos una reunión hace unas tres semanas. El comisionado se lo llevó, yo y el jefe fueron muy agradecidos con traer esto juntos. Y nos reunimos con la dirección de, creo, 24 escuelas juntas en este cuarto. Y nos conocimos por unos minutos y hablamos de dónde tenemos, dónde tienen, dónde debemos ir. Y todos ellos, a través de su seguro, han tenido entrenamiento que han puesto en turnamen. Identificamos algunas alternativas, algunas debilidades, tal vez, de eso que necesitábamos integrarnos y traernos a dos familias. Y estamos trabajando en hacer eso ahora mismo. Esto incluía no solo las escuelas públicas de Taos, todos los schools fueron representados en toda la condado de Taos, incluyendo las escuelas de charlas muy pequeñas, las raíces y los hombros de las que tienen muy pequeñas escuelas. Los adultos no tienen mucho experiencia para estar ahí.
Y como sabes, sucede principalmente en las escuelas. Pero sé que puede suceder en cualquier lugar. En las iglesias, ya sabes, las iglesias de todos los lugares, o los equipos de baloncesto, o cualquier otro lugar como ese. Así que tomará mucho comunicación de todas estas entidades para que puedan intentar ayudar en este evento.
Tuviste un de los temas que identificamos como debilidad. Tenemos una escuela relativamente segura durante el día, durante las horas escolares. La escuela de Taos High School es la mayor de las escuelas de recurso de la oficina de recursos de la ciudad de Taos. Y cosas así. Pero luego llegan los deportivos de la ciudad de Eden, a las 7 de la tarde, las escuelas se desvían. Y la policía solo tiene algunas recursos para ir por allí, pero hay clases de pedagogía donde sea que sea el deportivo. Pero esas son cosas que han sido identificadas como debilidades de nuestras oportunidades. Y vamos a trabajar para llevar eso a cabo. No estoy seguro de cómo todavía. Pero el primer paso es identificar problemas y luego brainstormar soluciones y ver cuál es la realidad que realmente podemos proporcionar. Es triste que vivamos en un mundo donde tenemos que usar bolsas traseras de libros para proteger a nuestros hijos. O tenemos bolsas traseras que están comercialmente disponibles que están listas para los estudiantes. Es triste que se haya llegado a eso en el mundo, pero pasó y ha pasado en la ocasión.
¿M. O'Donnell?
Gracias, señor presidente. Estoy contenta de que estemos aquí porque no estoy segura de que una resolución ayudaría. De mi entendimiento, es una cuestión federal. En los últimos minutos del día de la feria, hubo un filibuster relacionado con un proyecto de control de armas. Y, por supuesto, eso murió. Así que creo que hasta que tengamos cierta claridad de quién realmente tiene autoridad para cambiar nuestras leyes de control de armas. Ya viste que la legislatura realmente no quería tocarlo. En otra cuestión relacionada con los suicidios, habrá una audiencia el miércoles sobre las reglas de triaje de crisis que hemos estado esperando con el énfasis en la guardia de ocho días para personas suicidas. Y espero que ustedes puedan mirar esas reglas y enviarme un comentario. Voy a ir abajo y testificar sobre esas reglas. Porque parece que es lo que quieren. Y no tenemos una instalación. Sería bueno si tuviéramos el centro de detox. Si pudieramos hacer algo, ya sea con el centro de triaje de crisis o tratamiento residencial. Pero lo que sea, estamos esquivando nuestras ruedas en cómo abordar estas cuestiones de suicidio. En relación a eso, jefe, se refirió a alguien que tenía un arma. ¿Fue el que sacó un arma a la mujer embarazada en Piñasco este fin de semana? ¿Es ese el que se refiere?
No.
Bien, bueno. Sin importar lo que sea, todavía estoy esperando y queriendo. Y espero que la comisión acepte que necesitamos ver algún informe de crimen. Necesitamos saber dónde, cuántos suicidios, usted indicó nueve. Y espero que pronto use ese sistema de spillman para crear estadísticas para que podamos ver dónde está sucediendo el crimen, dónde están sucediendo los suicidios. Y así la comunidad también puede ver tendencias en nuestra comunidad para el crimen. Y así me gustaría, en algún momento, traer esto a la comisión completa que tengamos software similar a Albuquerque. Y que cooperemos con la policía estatal y la ciudad de Taos está ya lista para hacerlo. Tienen la información de la legacia. Que comenzemos a dejar a nuestros constituents saber qué exactamente está sucediendo en nuestra comunidad. Gracias, señor presidente.
Comisionado Gámez.
Señor presidente. Jefe Hopewell, aprecio y apoyo la idea de que hayas estado allí con los sistemas escolares y presentándolo al condado en general. Has oído su voz. Sabes exactamente lo que hay allí de los estudiantes, probablemente de los superintendentes, del facultad. Tal vez debamos conseguir que los boardes estén todos en el mismo cuarto, comisioneros, mayors, consejeros. Y debemos dejarnos saber dónde está el desconectado juvenil detención, los JPOs, el juez, el fiscal distrito. Porque terminamos teniendo esto involucrando, o incluso a la juventud que está allí. Hay un pie de ayuda y no la estamos ayudando. Su próxima agenda es obtener la atención a través de lo que está sucediendo en Florida y en todo el país. Así que, ya sabes, ahora que están obteniendo esta información, usa esa y haga una gran discusión y que los jueces sepan, el oficio del fiscal distrito y cualquier otra persona que pueda ayudar a través de organizaciones que trabajan con la juventud para llevar esto adelante. Porque, ya sabes, están heridos y están tratando de averiguar cómo obtener la atención. Y están usando de la mejor manera posible y lo ignoramos. Así que, ya sabes, con toda la información que están recogiendo, creo que es importante que intentemos no dejar que esto se desperdicien. Necesitan algún apoyo de esta comisión. Yo, como voluntario de la comisión, para hacer esa palabra y tener estos grupos de concentración. Nos apoyamos en eso.
Gracias. Gracias, jefe.
Solo un comentario rápido. Estamos usando el spillman. El spillman no es la respuesta que estás buscando. Las estadísticas, condado, vendrían a través de la oficina de investigaciones médicas. Y ese es el recurso que uso para obtener esa información. Y no estoy solo hablando de suicidios, estoy hablando de violencia en nuestra comunidad. Porque aunque teníamos un suicidio relacionado con armas en 2017, teníamos cinco veces más de incidencias relacionadas con armas en nuestra condado. Y para una condado de menos de 50,000 personas, realmente estamos bajando el nivel en lo que respecta a los estándares nacionales o a los estándares estatales. Así que solo quiero hablar de eso.
Gracias, jefe.
Gracias, creo que cinco minutos están listos.
¿Alguien más de la audiencia que desea abordar la comisión? Bueno, no hay ninguno. Gracias a todos por estar aquí y por sus comentarios, jefe. El siguiente tema en la agenda, número 7, es la aprobación de los 6 de febrero de 2018, los minutos regulares de reunión. ¿Comisioneros?
Vamos a aprobarlo, señor presidente.
Tengo una motion en segundo para aprobar los 6 de febrero de 2018, los minutos regulares de reunión. ¿El tal Hopewell?
M. Romero.
Sí.
M. O'Donnell.
Sí.
M. Blankenhagen.
Sí.
Vicechef Gámez.
Sí.
Presidente de la Cámara.
Sí.
The subject property and building of this salt and wine restaurant will operate as been in the years past used by other restaurants. A legal non-conforming use can continue to operate so long as the use has not been abandoned. And the change of the name of a restaurant, including ownership, does not affect the legal non-conforming use status. There are no plans to enlarge, expand, or extend the non-conforming use or structure simply a change of ownership. Therefore, the applicant does not need additional zoning and may continue to operate as a legal non-conformist. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, does have any questions?
Okay. So at this time, is there anything else from the applicant before we go to the public hearing? Okay. During that, this time I'll open up the public hearing. If you wish to come forward and make a statement regarding the approval of liquor license application 1073216 Sal Vino Restaurant where the El Metz used to be in El Rado, 1017 Plaza del Norte in El Rado, please come forward and be sworn by the clerk before you give your testimony.
Please, right hand. Do you swear an affirmative oath and penalty of love perjury that the testimony you are about to give is true and factual? Yes, please see me for the reference.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Cassandra Rometto. I am the Substance Abuse Preventionist for Rock Mountain Music Core. I was here just a week before last. This is actually my third presentation this month, one more next week, in response to the increasing work class for liquor licenses. So I just want to remind you that our county is 300% over quota as per what is recommended by the Alcohol Gaming Division as safe numbers for our community. This is an important number because it is what helps our community to stay healthy. In a healthy community with healthy substance abuse relationships, there is not an oversaturation of alcohol. This number does not include beer and wine. Last I checked, beer and wine is an alcohol. But I do really want to, you know, please with the county that there be a lot of thought in how we continue to have more and more alcohol licenses in our community and that single factor contributes negatively to the substance abuse problem in our community. That being said, we also want to encourage the applicant to work with Taskalife who has a best practices policy and procedures which can really help to reduce youth access and reduce alcohol, I'm sorry, excessive problem drinking within their establishment. I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rometto. Commissioner, welcome.
Chairman, so the county's only discretion in this matter is whether or not the property meets the zoning requirements which Mr. V. Hill covered and whether or not the applicant's place of business is within a certain number of feet of churches or schools. We don't have the policy discretion to limit these numbers as you ask. But, you know, I hear what you're saying and we can't require, but, you know, I certainly encourage the applicant to work with Taskalife and your group to create their own ways to mitigate the effects that you're trying to prevent.
Absolutely. And I understand that that's the position that we're at this point, but, you know, in response to the sheriff's comments as well, public safety is what we do, right? And my job is to look at substance abuse prevention and how to further improve the health of our community. And so it is my responsibility, my social responsibility, remind you every time and I will be here every time because I think there are policies and ordinances that we could adopt as a county that would, in the future, help us to keep pulse on this number.
Well, that may well be, and we certainly look forward to your input on that. It doesn't pertain to this particular public hearing, but you're always welcome, obviously, and thank you for your concerns and your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rometto. Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Rometto. As you've heard, we are limited in our discretion and it's the same issue with gun control. It's regulated by Tobacco, Alcohol, Firearms Department of the State. They have their rules. We can't supersede what they do. And so that's where our hands are tied. Now, I'd like the idea of going to these establishments. To me, it would seem like beyond this one, the ones who sell liquor. And so maybe that would be a good place to reach out to those who sell liquor without food and see if you can encourage them to take a good look at who they're selling to. So, but I feel like our hands are tied again in this. We really can't enact ordinances like we wanted to ban minis. We can't ban minis. It's a state issue, so we're kind of tied here.
Yes, absolutely. And so you know that it's part of our practices. We do work with local establishments that sell alcohol. It's a large number, so it takes some time, but that is definitely something that we're working on.
Thank you, Ms. Rometto.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to participate in the public hearing during today? Seeing that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Rometto, and the people you work with, and we'll see you next time. Commissioners, any further comments before we proceed? Mr. V. Hill, anything in addition?
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Just a couple of closing comments. The applicant is present. I just wanted to make that known to the record that the applicant is here. And with all due respect to Ms. Rometto, this will not be an additional license, and this restaurant previously has a beer and wine license there as well.
Pleasure, Commissioner. Motion to approve? Motion to approve liquor license application 1073216 Sal Vino Restaurant for beer and wine license on premises, consumption and patio service at 1017 Plaza del Norte, the Old El Metz.
I'll second with discussion, Commissioner.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion vice chair, I guess.
If the applicant can go forward and talk about what the differences are of a beer and wine license as to a full liquor license application.
Certainly.
He'll be helpful. It's going to be helpful.
Does that pose? Do you need to be sworn?
You close the public hearing.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, my name is Michael Wagner, the applicant. I do, if I may just say, I work very closely helping youth along through a few of those to the task sponsored skiing bike teams. And it is a big problem in this community with youth. The difference between a beer and wine license and a full liquor license, while there are many, the biggest difference, excuse me, difference is beer and wine is only for on-premise consumption with the sale of food during the hours that food is sold. There's no package sales. You can take an open bottle of wine off-premise as long as it's in a sealed lined dolly bag with the original port and receipt showing that it was bought and purchased earlier that day. So no package sales, no alcohol above 20%. So basically, port wine and beer.
There is also a percentage. So an example would be if we came into the establishment, we can't just sit there and drink beer. There has to be at least 65% of the total cost must be by food volume, right? Or something like that.
What it is, is it's not quite down on an individual ticket basis. You have to show that your sales for the year are 65% food or greater. If it's more than 35% of beer and wine, the state will deny that application.
You have to reach a few places.
Right? And then you also have, you may know, another license in the county with the Sack Restaurant in El Rado Seco. So this isn't my first go around with this, and, you know, we have a license and good standing and have not had any incidents, not to say that, you know, some of those just by nature are not completely under your control, but we do have very strict training, you know, along with the state guidelines and then even more so at my current establishment and would continue to implement those at the new establishment.
I do appreciate that your engagement with the youth, you get more information and know what they're doing, that you can have better handle management of how you do your business, so.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, I employ a lot of them too, so.
And that was just information tool for some of the public data for the commissioners for the differences of a full liquor license and a beer and wine, so there is some limitations.
Commissioners, anything else for the other? Thank you, Ms. Rometto. Thank you very much. I do have a motion in a second to approve liquor license application 1073216 for Colorado.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bykner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos?
Yes.
Chair Fambra?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for your time and good luck. Thank you for being responsible for the youth quality. Next item on our presentations, item one is a presentation by Rocky Mountain Music Core. This will be for you and local clerk, and I believe Cassandra Rometto will be assisting as well in her other hat. She's changing hats now.
Thank you. I'm back. You know, quicker than you thought, right? Again, Cassandra Rometto, Preventionist with Rocky Mountain Music Core. I'd like to take a moment to call up, we, at Rocky Mountain Music Core, we have an alternative placement school. And so this is a really important program for the community because students who may not be excelling well in the traditional setting of the high school or the middle schools have an opportunity for a smaller setting and more one-on-one learning opportunities. And so what's unique about this population is that not only are they amazing students, but they also have a deep connection with the data that we have to present for you today. And so I thought rather than just reading off numbers to you, we did a homework assignment together and read these slides individually. So there are 50 slides in this presentation, and we're not going to go through all of them. However, I do encourage you to look through them. If you have any additional questions, please contact us. There's information about county, town, adults, middle school, high school, all separated into different substance use.
Who's grading the assignment, us or you? Some of these guys, they don't get A's. I would eliminate us as an answer.
Wow. This is a public speaking project as well as a civic engagement activity for them. And so really, there's multiple levels to their grade, but, you know, you have a grade to offer. We encourage you to do that. So again, these are the statistics that we pulled. So we do several different forms of data collection. We do the New Mexico Community Survey, which is conducted every spring in the community, and pulls from approximately 400 participants in the community. We also have the Strategies for Success, which is conducted in deep different schools, including middle school and high school, to ask similar questions regarding substance use, familiarity, beliefs, perceptions, and of youth exposure to abuse. So that is what you're going to see here today. At the end of our presentation, we are going to call Taskalife as our Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, and they have some suggestions as far as things that we can do with the community to take a hold of this issue. And so I'd like to introduce Amy Long, who is their teacher, and she's going to go through their presentation slides. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Amy Long. I'm the instructor at the Learning Lab, and I am going to model for the students that even when we're nervous, we stand up here and speak. So I'm very comfortable talking to middle schoolers, I'm less comfortable talking to y'all, but we feel that this is something extremely important. And before I invite the students up, I'd just like to let you guys know, this is my whole class minus a couple of students that are absent. So we didn't just pick young people who had stories related to the impact of alcohol, but literally, we looked through the slides and students picked out the slides that spoke to them. And every single young person in my classroom had a personal story to share about a couple of the slides. So you're in charge of the slides themselves, right? So the first student that's going to come up is associated with slide number seven. If you want to skip ahead to slide seven. And that's Miss Heaven. So Heaven's going to point a couple of things out. Okay, so this is actually an absent student who did this slide, so I'm going to read her statement. She gave me permission to read the statement for her. So she says, her name is Navea, she's not here today. She says, "My slide is about alcohol use and deaths. One thing I want you to notice is how many people die because of drinking. This is so important to me because New Mexico has almost 60 deaths per 100,000 people caused by this issue. I'm writing about this issue because it has affected me and still does. Alcohol abuse and usage put my mother in a physically abusive and emotionally abusive relationship with my father, that involved domestic violence with my father, that I watched affect her and tear my family apart. It has changed my father once of alcohol, and I now see the demon in his eyes. I still see this demon, but in different eyes of my stepfather now. I'm worried that it is going to kill him and others." And that's Navea, who wasn't here. If you look at the slide, we see that New Mexico has the highest alcohol-related death rate in the nation, and that task rate is significantly higher than the state of New Mexico. It's also worth noting that Navea is not here today because of mental health issues that largely stem from substance abuse in their family. That's the reason for her absence today. The next slide is slide number seven, and that is Heaven.
I will be talking about high school and middle school alcohol abuse. Two things I want you to notice in this slide are the high school is pretty high, but the middle school is getting higher, and the high school is actually getting lower through the years. I have had some family members that are in high school or middle school that have some troubles with drinking. Those people are my two brothers. They can't stop. I try telling them to stop. They get moaned at as they are drunk. I saw my brother drunk. I can't stand it. I can't see it either. It hurts me too much.
Thank you.
These students are seventh in age for your side.
My slide is about the immediate impact of alcohol sales, and if you notice, it's the amount per person from 2006 to 2007. And the fact that it's probably only gone since then is important because my father was a heavy drinker and just that he spent around like $1,000 more than like on alcohol a year. Just because we lived in poverty for several years and it's just a different.
So one thing we talked about in class when she was less nervous was the fact that people in her family have had access services both at the hospital, and then she's had family members who've been incarcerated as a result of alcohol, and so that cost is not just on her family, but on all taxpayers in the community who have to support the family members that she has to suck in alcohol.
And my slide is about alcohol impact on the community. Thank you, my stance out on the overdose of alcohol harms the presence of children. And I'm one of those people, when I was eight, my dad had a driving accident with me in the car. I remember I was really scared that night. My parents had a physical fight about it. It turned really bad on it, and my mom and dad ended up getting divorced as a result. My dad's alcohol use, and my relationship with him, and he started to see this issue becoming more intense. And I was scared that he was unhappy because of my dad. And it has led him to rapings and doing drugs, so he's in prison for alcohol.
I'm reading the statistics for the access of alcohol and what the highest percentage is. From what the statistics say, highest percentage is 28.3 at a party. But it seems that the most statistic is by a store restaurant far public place.
Thank you, Zach. We have one more student who doesn't have a slide associated with her statement.
My name is Pauline, and I'm a Rocky Mountain. I'm a student at Rocky Mountain Core Learning Lab. As someone who has grown up on public law, I have been around people who have been harmed by alcohol. My biological mom has been an alcoholic since I was born, and I got taken away from my hometown when I was only four years old. At that time, she was so sick of alcohol that she couldn't really be alone. Everyone in my mom's life knew she needed rehab, and she had been to treatment so many times at this house. I know they sent her to many different rehab visits. She went once when I was in kindergarten, once when I was in elementary, and once when I was in sixth grade. Believe it or not, this whole time I have felt like she didn't care about me, just about herself. I used to hope that rehab would help her because she always said that she was trying, but then she'd come back to task and relapse, so I stopped believing her. Now I'm in seventh grade, and I guess I'm used to not seeing my mom. I wish I grew up somewhere where it wasn't so easy to, it wasn't so easy to get alcohol because maybe I still do it.
So we understand that you guys can't wave a magic wand and solve this problem in our community, but this is 100% of the young people in my class. This is 100% of the young people in my class every semester, and I feel extremely lucky and blessed that they're willing to share our stories because, I think, as adults, we need to hear their testimonies and we need to come together as a community, whether we own an alcohol establishment, whether we're a teacher, a city commissioner, or a business owner. These young people are our kids, and they're amazing and they're resilient, and this isn't their whole story, but as you can tell from each and every one of them, it's a big part of their story, and we're asking the grownups to listen and to do everything that we can to make access to alcohol more difficult and access to care easier. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I know. Thank you so much to all of you for the presentations. I can see that, you know, these presentations are really heartfelt, they come from the heart, and I certainly appreciate that. I'm just wondering if maybe the county, Mr. Chairman, could sponsor these young people and maybe they'll put together some sort of a video presentation that could be used not only in the county, Sheriff's Department, the Town and Task Police Department, but all these other programs that are trying to address this issue. It would be really good if the county could somehow participate in that.
Definitely. My name is Ashley Grace, and I'm just going to close out the presentation today. I'm the Alcohol Policy Coordinator with Taskalife, so my area of expertise is policy solutions to alcohol issues that are community-based, and I just want to quickly present a couple of possibilities today. And one of those is increasing the distance requirements between alcohol outlets. So the AGD requires a 300-foot distance requirement between outlets and between outlets and sensitive locations. We've been working with a national firm that provides technical assistance to local communities in implementing policy solutions to alcohol issues, and it may be a possibility, we've been working with the Town of Taus on this issue. According to this legal firm, it's a legal possibility for the Town of Taus to increase distance requirements despite pre-anchoring issues at the state level, and so we believe that may also be a possibility for the county. There are other solutions as well. One of the big issues we see is alcohol catch for retail outlets. Many of the retail outlets that are a problem are within the precincts of the town currently, but we want to look out for the future. So requiring segregation of alcohol sections is also another solution. Use of abatement ordinances are also something that have been used successfully across the country by communities to reduce alcohol-related issues, so that's also something we could work with. If everyone is interested in pursuing some of these policy solutions, we're more than happy to assist and support and educate in whatever ways might be appropriate. The national firm I work with is also willing to conduct a legal analysis for the Taus County in particular to determine what powers you might have to implement these sort of policy solutions. So perhaps we could also examine that moving forward because there are, again, powerful policy solutions that are within your scope of legal power to implement that we could work together to implement, and that would make a big difference in this issue in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you all did a wonderful job in your public speaking and, you know, for your first time in a meeting like this, you all did wonderful with the topic and the personal information that you shared just made it a little tougher. You all handled it very well, and thank you very much. We have a little thing here, we're not going to give you a grade, we'll give you all A's, but they give you to dispute your grades. But then this is something to remind you of being here today, and it's our way of thanking you for coming and sharing your stories with us here today, and we really appreciate the words that you shared with us. All right. Item B is a road assessment tool for the public works staff. This will be presented by our... This will be presented by our on-call engineers from WH Pacific, Mike Malloy and Joe Sanchez. Mr. O'Neal.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm asking Mr. Malloy and Joe Sanchez to make this presentation. One of the things that me and Mr. Parcheco continually talk about is how to make Public Works a better department and we continue to strive to improve each day and improve each week and each month and each year. So one of the things that we're talking with WH Pacific on is about how to assist our road foremen as well as Mr. Parcheco on assessing the roads and WH has done something similar apparently at county. This is what they're going to present. Mr. Sanchez will be heavy lifting today. Mr. Malloy is a little bit under the weather there, so Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. O'Neal, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for doing us this time today. Tool that we're going to talk about is Transportation Asset Management and we'll give a brief overview of WH Pacific at the time. So our second, our second slide, stay here. So our second slide here is just a general outline of the presentation and so we're going to go ahead and talk about the actual meat and potatoes occurs down there around Bullitt Island Four. WH Pacific is a woman-owned business that's headquartered in Louisiana. It's fully integrated. It provides services and transportation facilities, construction management, architecture, landscape engineering and design, and water resources. We have offices throughout the western United States. So there's just a summary of our general service lines that we do and with that, we'll go ahead and get right into Transportation Asset Management. So what is Transportation Asset Management and why is it good for Tous County? Well, Transportation Asset Management is a method to identify, locate, evaluate, value, and help rate for prioritized improvements of your transportation system components. TAM is a transportation data collection tool for your transportation system components. TAM can be a planning and budgeting tool for maintaining and improving your existing transportation assets. And TAM can be a management tool for preserving your transportation system investment. We all know that transportation items cost money and they can be quite expensive at times. So what can these transportation assets be? Well, you know, we kind of break them up into three pieces or four pieces or five pieces, but for purposes of presenting here today, we're going to talk about roadways, roadside and structures. The general things that everyone sees every day on the roadways, whether it's paved and what kind of pavement is there, whether it's concrete or whether it's asphalt. Roadway striking is something we don't think about every day, but something that does affect other issues like safety are the road striking that does delineate the lane and travel directions or turning movements and signers in traffic and travel. Sometimes we have at the county level base course roadways and those also have costs associated with them. Sometimes within counties, there are earth purpose roadways that are maintained and those have a different set of issues that need to be evaluated differently than a paved surface. We can also have signals or we can have sidewalks, curb gentrification, and other items. Roadside for that area is outside the travelway, right, on the side of the roadway. So you have guardrails and you can have light poles and intersections. We all see the things in front of the guardrails and they're really to kind of deflect cars and prevent them from going through the roadway or off the side of the road. Crash attenuators are a higher level of an intersection. They're designed for higher, higher speed or kinetic energy crashes. They're designed for higher kinetic energy crashes. Signs are also in the roadway and they provide all kinds of different information to the driver, where they're going, what to obey, the speed limit, where to turn, things like that. Roadside delineators, something we don't really think about frequently, but something that's pretty important also. Roadside delineators, they can identify where your culvert locations are at, right? So that becomes a clear maintenance identification for your road crews. They know where that culvert's at and there's a delineator saying there's an opening right there. Minor culverts, those are smaller culverts. And fences and gates, structures, we all know what those are. They're ridges and pipe batteries that get put together. Sometimes we have retaining walls, crash barrier walls, little water crossings, and caddies. So all transportation assets have locations, they have dimensions and conditions, and they have monetary value, right? So they're all in the county. Each county district has, has these items. Each county community has these items. They can be georeferenced, which is wonderful because you're able to use an existing tool that you have. They can be tied to GIS and mapped. The dimensions and conditions are things that we think about, getting in general in terms of helping evaluate the costs. So that would be like length, width, depth, or thickness. They can have varying surface conditions or remaining life, right? So you know that this road's falling apart, but you may not know why. You may have 500 road miles and of those 500 road miles, you have 30% of them that are at a service level of 2.2, they're getting close to failure. So you're going to have to do something to evaluate it. Can have varying material types and we talked about that earlier, like base course, pavement, or chip steel, things like that. And of course, there is the monetary value associated with those items. So that's by initial expenditure, your capital investment. There's a maintenance planning cycle associated with them and that helps you budget through time, how to keep those assets in good, in good condition and/or for improvement or for safety need and long-term just for your general system preservation. There's also 202 actual roadway elements that can be customized based on Tous County's specific needs. So why would Tous County, why would TAM be beneficial for Tous County? Tous County will have a deeper understanding of their transportation system at the county level and at the county district level. You'd know the condition of your county roads and the components that are in those roadways and the types and locations of those assets. You would be better able to plan for system component replacements and improvements. It's something that, you know, all communities in New Mexico worry about, that fiscally constrained environment, we have to worry about budget and things like that. And it would help you manage your expenditures in a prioritized manner for effective maintenance and preservation of the county road system. And, you know, I like Wikipedia as much as everyone else, so here's just a little description of, from Wikipedia that I found. So the county would be better, would be better able to manage their infrastructure investments such that dividends accrue through increased productivity, improved living conditions, and greater prosperity. What I mean by that is that there are other public service uses that occur in your transportation system, be it the school buses, law enforcement, emergency services, the general traveling public. And we all know that infrastructure and transportation systems also affect their opportunities to attract businesses and economic development. So those items are, can be attributed to better road systems. Your response times for emergency services become better, law enforcement, what I would call repeatability and expectation in terms of being able to get from point A to point B become better based on the condition of the roadway. School buses, they're not exposed to certain hazards that can happen with a bad roadway. And I'll make some examples about this later. Where I worked previously, there were specific issues that we had to address. So how can WH Pacific help Tous County with Transportation Asset Management? Well, we believe in team and we believe in sharing our knowledge with our, with our partners so we can build internal capacity to collect that asset information and that means that we work with the county and the county staff to show them how to do that so they can learn how to do it. We can train using low-cost tools that are customizable. We talked about 202 roadway elements earlier. You may not need all 202, so we can customize that data set. You can, these tools are customizable and they can be conformed to best management practices or BMPs for Transportation Asset Management. Once you have the data, you can actually analyze the data and it can be value-based. Where do you need to spend your money today, right? How can you best preserve your road system? And so those things really help you locate, evaluate, rate, and estimate the transportation system needs and then you can better preserve your system based on that data. And then financial planning, right? Financial planning leads to a knowledge and database decision-making for prioritized budget decision-making. You can prioritize how you're going to spend it, right? So I like the stair steps because it kind of helps you move along, get up to the top and be at a high performance level. Sorry, I didn't turn to that slide while I was talking. So we've done this before. WH Pacific has a firm that's been for work for the VIA for the tribes. Mike himself has done this personally for another county. I myself actually created a department of transportation for a small tribe. They didn't have a transportation department. So we established everything for them from, from plans and programs and procedures and processes to include road maintenance planning, transportation asset management, data collection, planning and budget, planning for renewals, replacements, and planned expenditures. You can imagine on a daily basis the difficulty that your Public Works Department has based on the available funds, how they're able to meet the needs of the traveling public and keep the roadways safe and at the same time prioritize where they're going to be able to improve them or how to address emergency repairs. It's the same in every small community in New Mexico. There's never enough money, so how do you have to spend and you need to prioritize it? So WH Pacific is a firm, we have mutuals, we have experienced staff to do that. We have experience with TAMs, we have technological capacity, we understand fiscal constraint, we understand that budget, again, and the use of dollars in an effective manner is very important. And we understand sharing our knowledge with our client. We understand that we need to help build our capacity to do some of this work. Some of this work is very repetitive and takes a lot of time. There are, there are times where it's better for us to train and allow county people to collect that data. So again, we manage our, our, our resources well and we help the county utilize our services very well by sharing our knowledge. We understand local governments' need for efficiency and we understand the importance of leveraging resources. So again, that's people, dollars, and time, right? Resources eventually end up to people, dollars, and time. That kind of concludes our overview of TAM. We do have several tools available. We would like to be able to customize, discuss that with the county and what best service the county needs. So there are several tools available. The general process of Transportation Asset, Asset Management is described here in this presentation. With that, John Pitt is our Operations Manager. Mike's role within the company is he's a Senior Cooperation Director for the entire company and I am a Director of one of the Transportation, or Transportation and Development groups there. Would that all stand?
Yes, appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I apologize that I'm a little bit under the weather today, but if you know me, you know I like to talk. But in any event, I just want to, I just want to talk a little bit about how we helped Burnley County. Essentially with Burnley County, we ended up with software. They wanted, they didn't have tablets for the road superintendents. So we ended up through the contract, buying, buying tablets as well as installing the software. We essentially took a square mile within Burnley County. We took all the road superintendents out so that everybody was looking at the same roadway in the same way. And that consistency is needed when you start taking a look at the data that's collected. In addition to that, what happens is when the data comes back, we're able to filter that data by the top priorities for roadway, by the top priorities for various districts, their roadways, so that we give this data back to the Commission so that you see what's, what's in both, both the districts as well as the overall Tous County. So that you can then prioritize how you want to do, how you want to address the needs within the county. I think it's an important tool that the counties use because they take this data up to the legislature and talk about, and talk about the needs that are in the county to try to secure the funds to be able to address those needs. And with that, let Joe finish up.
So y'all can tell Mike's not doing very well. With that, I'll send for questions. I do want to mention one thing. Because I have worked in a lot of small communities, I've had some interesting opportunities to, to work across boundaries and I had a recent opportunity to work with law enforcement and to gain a deeper understanding of the issues that they have to deal with. And I'm from Asay, New Mexico. Your Sheriff mentioned that something terrible happened in Asay last year and that's all I'm going to say though, it's terrible. But the thing that we instituted in terms of active shooter training, which is available, the law enforcement people know how to do, is a training that can be taken to the, to your public offices and to your schools and to other people that know how to help with that. Active shooter training is a very important tool to help people understand how to be safe in those situations. Another thing that was very interesting to myself is I was able to attend a training with law enforcement, crime analysis. Our police chief where I worked at, Mr. Darren Solon, he's the Chief of Police in the community and he also is a retired State Police Captain. What that does is it's an analysis tool that uses similar tools to asset management to help you analyze, help you analyze where your crime hotspots are, how those crimes are, when those crimes are occurring or other situational things. So the police are wonderful people and just learning the issues that they have to deal with, but also the resources that they know how to use is a great thing. How it integrates with engineering because ultimately the things that we build are used by the public and by your public servants. So that's really what I wanted to kind of dovetail into, into your Sheriff's statement. And without, do you have any standard questions?
Commissioner O'Neal. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Do you work at all with the New Mexico Department of Transportation?
My, my interest is not working with, my focus is not with the Department of Transportation. I focus on tribes. I have, I worked with the Department of Transportation for 13 years and I worked everywhere from the planning specifications in and on through project development and the consultant design program. So very knowledgeable in how the Department of Transportation works. I've worked with tribes and different regulations that apply to tribes as well. So there are overlaps between transportation funding agencies and types of agencies.
Mr. Malloy with the Black House.
Commissioner, we, Department of Transportation is a major focus for WH Pacific. We're working on probably about seven or eight DOT jobs at this point in time, all the way from Lovington to actually 68 till you get to the canyon. That's going to be one of our projects. So we've, we've worked for communities, we've worked for counties on transportation issues and a lot of times they deal with the interface with the DOT.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So TAM is a software program?
TAM is a process. There are various software programs that can be integrated into the current software program that Tous County uses. So there's not a, a gradual transition linking back to your current software, but there are tools out there that can be imported into your GIS system.
What's the cost we're talking about?
Some of the tools are rental, lease agreement monthly at $25 a month. While you collect the data, you can, you can either have an annual license or you can use it for the period that you're going to use the collection software to integrate it back to your home.
What is your proposal of, if you are presenting today, your estimated cost?
Commissioner, our proposal today is one of, we just wanted to present the concept. I think what we've got to do is go back into I T to find out the tools that are available to try to integrate those tools with the software that we have, and then come back to the commission with a formal proposal. And a lot of it is, as I talked about earlier, for what we did with Burnley County, if the commission has an interest of training the road superintendents in the various districts, obviously the cost goes down because Taos County personnel are actually doing the evaluation. It's just, it's basically a training session to collect the data and then take that data to put it into, to put it into a system that's compatible not only with public works, but also with I T.
So, I'm, uh...
Chairman, commissioners, so part of the reason G I S planning is here is the assessment tool might be able to get incorporated into what we currently use in G I S, so we could purchase additional software, or purchase tablets for the road format, or we can use our existing G I S. W H Pacific hasn't had a chance to sit down with Eric. We did pass on Eric's contact information last week. Deborah's going to give our current Excel spreadsheet of all the current road conditions, and then we'll decide if we can use the Esri software that the planning department already currently uses, because we already identified all the county roadways, their G I S, and we can then incorporate, if it's a gravel or a base course road, onto what we're currently using. We already have the length of miles through planning, and I know Ron uses it every day, and even on his phone, he uses planning's roadways to identify different roadways. So we'll sit down and either purchase this additional software, or we'll incorporate what we already have in our own planning department.
And that's great. I think it's needed. I think a couple of years ago, you brought this up, and Los Alamos has a similar program, and I think it was $8,000 a year. At that point, it was too much, but now I think we need to do that. So let me ask you, say you have a dirt road, like I have a road in Pinyosco, Valdez Road, and it needs paving. How do you assess when a dirt road needs to be paved? I mean, how do you work with the dirt roads?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's something that we try to deal with both the commission as well as the road superintendents to find out where the chromo areas are so that we can address it. If, in fact, a dirt road needs to be a paved road based on traffic volumes and accidents and a lot of other things, then it's brought to the commission to see what your appetite is for paving a particular road. In addition to that, what I do want to say is that with the G I S and everything else, as the road superintendents are going out to take a look at these roads, they're taking pictures of the various road segments that get incorporated into the G I S, so that you as the commission, as well as the public works director, the road superintendents have a history of where that road has been and what needs to be done.
So what's the difference when D O T goes out, and our road superintendent may do an inventory of all the roads? A couple of years ago, they said to me that our roads are really in bad shape, and this was an assessment by D O T. So is there an overlap with that process?
This is more than an inventory. It's a condition assessment based on the road, as well as, as Joe indicated, the appurtenances at the roadways, whether signage is needed, whether guardrail is needed, whether at different facets of the road. So, yes, it is, but essentially what we do is we build from the information that the D O T in Taos County have gathered to move this forward to the next level.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else, question? Commissioner Blakenhart?
Thank you, Chairman. I've been a long advocate of better planning and prioritization in public works. I know it's easier said, easy for me to say, you know, but, and I think these guys have made some good progress, but it strikes me that these are really valuable tools, and I'm assuming the administration agrees, or they wouldn't have put this presentation out there, and assuming the Works Department also agrees. So, thank you for the presentation. I hope we can move forward, and I'm optimistic about it relative to the cost.
Sure. Yeah, I did want to reiterate something that Mike said earlier. W H Pacific works with all agencies, federal, state, and local, as well as the tribes and communities. So in New Mexico, those are things I can't do.
Thank you. Mike, feeling better?
Always. Thank you.
Thank you all. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, when will this come back before the commission?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to meet how our budget works, so hopefully by then we'll have some costs associated with it. We just wanted to introduce it to the commission so you know why we're asking, as we know more in terms of detail. So we'll come back to it with the budget works.
Are there other companies that need to come before us for presentation, or how's it been working?
Well, we're currently in contract with W H Pacific. So yes, there are other companies, but I think part of our contract with W H and some of the work we've done makes us pretty comfortable moving forward with them at this time.
Okay. Okay, thanks. You're following away.
Mr. Chairman, no, for a 10-minute break.
All right. A motion for a 10-minute break to reconvene at 10:30?
Second.
Clerk Calloway.
Mr. Omero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
He said yes. Yes. All right. I'm seeking a motion to come back into session.
So move.
Second. Motion is second to come back into our session. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fambro?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is item 10, our consent agenda. I will read the consent agenda. If there's any items that a commissioner wishes to pull off for further discussion, that will be taken care of as the next order of business after the passage of the remaining parts of the consent agenda. Item A is approval of D F A resolution number 19201718 fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final budget to establish budget for N M D O T, local government road fund projects, and to transfer permanent and temporary cash from general fund. Item B is approval of D F A resolution number 20, which is a resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final budget to account for amendment number one of D W I direct agreement number 18-d-g-30, increasing revenue and expenditures, and to transfer temporary cash from general fund. Item C is approval of D F A resolution number 21 for 201718 fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final budget to increase revenue and expenditures of general fund to account for actual payment of small county's assistance distributed to Taos County for 2018 fiscal year. Item D is approval of budget adjustment for the purchasing department, 0101-1125. Item E is approval of budget adjustment for Taos County Library, 2014 general obligation bond, 2410-2067. Item F is approval of budget adjustment for Rio Fernando Fire District, 0222-1558. Item G is approval of contract T C C 2017-1296 plus for hosting the Taos County website. Item H is approval of contract T C C 2016-04082 with W H Pacific amendment number two. Item I is approval of D W I distribution and grant application for fiscal year 2019 funding for the Taos County D W I program. Item J is approval of purchase of two Dodge Duragos for the assessor's office, and item K is approval of resolution number 2018-12, resolution of the governing body of the county of Taos authorizing the exchange of two parcels of real property for one parcel owned by the town of Taos. Commissioners, at this time, I'm requesting that we pull item K because the quick claim deed that was given to us from the town of Taos is wrong. It's us giving them the property we're seeking from them, so we would be seeking an adjustment on that before we vote. Any other items that wish to be pulled?
Commissioner? Mr. Chairman, no. Thank you very much. I was going to ask that item K be removed from immediate approval on the consent agenda. And I was wondering, I think we should make it a practice of never putting real estate transactions in a consent agenda, unless it's a very simple matter.
This was one that we had been briefed on, and it's time-sensitive, so we're just talking about, we're going to talk about it anyway. Any other items? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'd like to call item G, please.
Item G by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any other? I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by S. item G and K.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Calloway.
Mr. Omero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fambro?
Yes. Item G is approval of contract T C C 2017-129 civics plus for hosting the Taos County website. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to hear item K first while we see if we can get our M I S director down here to answer a few questions on item G. So I make a motion that we hear item K before item G.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second to go out of order with item K prior to item G. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fambro?
Yes. Okay, item K is approval of resolution 2018-12, which is a resolution of the governing body of Taos authorizing the exchange of two parcels of real property for one parcel owned by the town of Taos. With the mess up in the paperwork, commissioners, this is the exchange of land that we've talked about now for approximately two years. The herder property going for the property out by the landfill, which would become the future home of our public works. What I would be seeking now is that you authorize myself and the manager to execute a corrected purchase agreement once our attorney has reviewed and made sure there's no other repairs. So move.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and check.
Okay, a motion and a discussion, Commissioner Omero.
So what will the corrected settlement?
Well, what they did was they put, Taos County was giving them the property out by the landfill to the town of Taos, and it's just, they flip-flopped, or used the one that when we gave it back to them over a year ago, they just used that one and changed the signature letters, thinking of the sorts. We'll get that ironed out, and then that age-old thing, we're finally getting it off the desk and getting it completed, so they can, because they do have a deadline coming very soon on the affordable housing, but they need to get that rolled, so we'll get it done as soon as possible.
So would put it to the other ones, those options.
That one must have come from the legal staff, I don't...
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, hi, Andy.
Commissioners, I might be able to help a little bit. So we drafted up the documentation that you see on the agenda last week, and we were in communication with the town of Taos, and I was working with their attorney, but there was some confusion, I think, because it is a three-piece of property transaction about them getting a deed to us for the transfer of the property they're transferring to us. The legal description in the purchase agreement attached to the resolution, and the description in the resolution is correct, but there was not a deed attached that was as stated in the resolution that is accurate, so we have to finish that. Secondly, this does have to go to the State Department of Finance to approve, and so if, I would just ask that we were add that to the motion that if there are any changes to purchase agreement required by the State Department of Finance that don't materially alter the transaction, that we give the authority to the chair, the manager, to execute that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and say the motion for approval.
Okay, a motion. Okay, and a second to approve resolution 2018-12 with the corrections and authorizing the chair and manager to execute the purchase agreement with any non-material changes as required by D F A. Motion is second, Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Fambro?
Yes.
Everybody here, commissioners, you're requesting for item G?
No, I wanted to ask some questions from the I T director on this website we designed. Oh, there he is. Oh, thank you, okay.
Okay. Item G is approval of contract T C C 2017-129 civics plus for hosting the Taos County website. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. O'Donnell, thank you for bringing this forward. It's very much appreciated that we get a new website and a new design to serve our public. A couple of quick questions. There was some line item contract that said only allow 25 gigabytes on their server. Can you explain that? Doesn't seem like a lot.
25 gigabytes is actually quite a bit for a website. That's the amount of space that we can use to put up all each department's website, any documents that they have. Documents are really small, they're generally, the P of earlier kilobytes. So, yeah, 25 gigabytes is quite a bit of space.
Okay, so I was noticing there's an R I P on the current website for some bridges. When I click to download, it's a 2.5 megabyte file, so are you going to work on converting these files?
The reason is why that happens is when you scan, if it's scanned as an image, it's going to be a bigger file. There's another way to do that, which we just create the document as a PDF, and it's text-based, so that reduces the size of files, so there's a lot of things that we can do to reduce downloads.
Okay, so I know some of these file sizes are large, so if you're going to correct that?
Yes.
And then, we had talked about with a visit of F A D, Foundation for Open Government, they would like to see a platform that is not PDF, that is HTML or a different format, where you can take the document and easily copy it. Right now, PDF files are a nightmare to...
It's also the same, along the same reasons why you're having problems with copying the pages, because if it's scanned as an image and you try to copy the text to put it into a Word editor, it won't work. It's going to take the image of the page and put a picture of your text into it instead of just the text that you can edit. So when we fix the problem with the PDFs going up as images instead of as text documents like they should be, that will be that problem solved.
So, you're saying it will be other than PDF files?
Well, no, PDF is our primary, that's our preferred method for putting our certain documents up there. And the website content itself, vast of its HTML, but everything we put out there, like for public to view, for example, the form that downloads, I think those are all in PDFs.
I was wondering if you would be so kind as to check with the F A D director again, because he specifically talked about a different format that's easy for people who are doing research, who want to download files.
We call him up and see what he's talking about. Right now, I'm not sure what he really wants with that word, because PDF is pretty much like the standard word.
So what's the timeline?
We're hoping to have this up by June, so actually what we've been waiting on is protocol, so getting you guys authorization for that, and hopefully we get started soon. as we can. Okay?
And you solve the problem of having, giving everybody a password and getting online that it should be managed by just several people.
Right, this will give us the ability for those departments who have a lot of information they need to post, they'll be able to do that themselves, so they don't have to wait on us. Another case is, it's, you know, just wiser for us to do it, so we'll continue to do that for whoever needs it as well.
So how about a penetration test to make sure that we aren't going to get hacked?
That's, that will come after we can't go, can test it until it's been running. I mean, that's one of the reasons we're going with Civic Plus is because they're rooted in civic websites, so they've done this a million times and one of the things that they claim is that they have secure coding too. So I can't imagine that they wouldn't, you know, it's pretty pricey proposition.
Great, well, thank you for your work and I'm really glad this is moving forward. This was one of our priorities during our retreat. So let's make this website number one, so we get on that top five website list.
We'll do it with your information. Any suggestions, feel free to email it to me as well. I'd be happy to look at those and we'd like to incorporate as much as we can, if you put them over the public and we can.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve contract TCC 2017-29 Civics Plus for hosting the Taos County website.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any discussion, Commissioner Blankhorn.
Yeah, one question. So Realtors and people in the property transaction community, they've been, they've complained for some time that all of the information that used to be available, it's no longer available. What are you talking about?
They're probably referring to the assessment website, the assessment lookup. That's actually an issue with our vendor Triadic, the other ones who host that website. We host it, but they built the website and it's the web server we have up in our data center which connects to their IBM server. So there's kind of limitations to what we can do. We've kind of got to work around for it, which is I set a, I set the server to reboot every morning by itself and that fixed the problem pretty much, but there's still some underlying issues with doming every morning that tends to go down after a couple of days and it's like I'm working with Triadic to try to get that fixed and they just haven't found the final solution yet. But we have been addressing that and we haven't had that really on, it's probably been a couple weeks now, but every now and then it does tend.
It is assessment values, I guess that's the information that everybody's looking for.
Yeah.
Seems to me that it's probably available on most counties' websites and it's.
Yeah, it's helpful for the transactional. Yeah, I know the, I've given it a couple of times with my official number and it's told, send me a text when it's down and I'll just reboot it immediately. I can even do that remotely, so I mean, we're doing as much as we can, whatever we can do, but it's proprietary for Triadic software, so they have to be the ones to keep going. Okay, but we are working with Triadic? We are. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, but I think it would be good to have a work study sometime for the Commission to let you know what we think our priorities are that should be up, whether they're audits, reservations, ordinances, all in one place. I like, you know, the different departments, that we all can meet and see what each department thinks are their priority for the first phase of this, because there is a lot of data here.
Yeah, there is.
And I hope they organize it correctly.
I sent out a survey to each department here asking for just exactly that information. Got a few responses, so I'm not going to send it out again this weekend and see if I get any more.
But I think it would be more of a side question. Guys, we all know where everybody's coming from, where we're coming from, what we want as a commission to be a priority up on the website, so thank you.
There's even a feature through Civics Plus, we've worked at a small community in North Taos here, where we can actually do, if you can submit your permit through there, I'll link you out and some let Mike know that's available to see.
Cool, I'm actually working with Bobby and Sarah also, getting their permits going, we'll see him after.
Let Bobby know to look into that and Mike, that'd be happy for us. Any other discussion? Harry, now, Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blankhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigels.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes. Thank you. Item 11, Department Matters. First, approval of the 2017-18 fiscal year financial budget, second quarter financial review. Good morning, Ms. Marquise, how are you?
Good, thank you, good morning. So the period that I'm reporting for is the period ending December 31st, 2017. Some of the major highlights this fiscal year were some large capital purchases. Taos County has continued to maintain consistency with all our funds and we have sustained adequate cash balances in all our funds. Our grants administration has been working phenomenal with all the grants that we do administer. Taos County Finance Department is able to monitor our detail of transfers. And one thing that did change this fiscal year was the solid waste quarter debilin, and we did experience a 5% medical increase effective January 1st. Financial planning is underway for our 18-19 budget and our financial position for the county is stable. In our general fund, you have courtesy of five years of actual data all the way back to fiscal year 14. Starting off with fiscal year 14, we have a beginning cash of 6.4 activity and then ending cash of $7 million. In fiscal year 18, we have a beginning cash balance of 6.8 million. Revenues increased 3.64% from prior fiscal year. Our expenditures also increased 5.97% from prior fiscal year in the amount of 4.9 million. We had some transfers out and we have an all-time historic cash high in the amount of 9.8 million dollars. The next slide is a slide of our actual revenue that has come in. Taos County projected revenue has been moving in accordingly. Second page captures the detail. Quick writing out in excess that Taos County general fund revenue has risen 65% of the budget. At mid-year, it should be around 50%, so we're above 15%. Our next page is our departments that fall under our general fund. We have about 26 departments. I have provided courtesy copies of all the expenditure reports at the end of our report. For purposes of the presentation today, I have just provided a budget summary that I will just quickly go over. The columns I will go over are the actuals of last year, December 31st, 2016, to the actuals this year, December 31st, 2017, with ending cash expenditures last year at 4.5 million to this year's expenditures of 4.9 million dollars. Right now, Taos County expenditures in the general fund are about 42% of the actual budget, falling a little bit below the 50% benchmark at mid-year budget. Our Public Works Fund is our next fund. Again, you have the historical data for the last five years of actual data that has come into the county. We have experienced a slight increase in our revenues and our Public Works Department is about 9.98%. Last year's amount was $349,000. This year it's $384,000 and our expenditures have gone slightly by 1.60% with an ending cash balance of $219,000. You have the detail on the next couple of pages to support the revenue and the expenditures of our Public Works Division. And anytime if you have questions, please just stop me from continuing. Our next major fund is our E911 fund. This fund has new this fiscal year as far as the revenue that we are collecting due to the new GRT increment that was placed July 1st. We started receiving revenue in September. Right now, we have the cash balance of $356,000 in our E911 fund. This allows for us to have the reserve requirement set in place and a little bit of extra cash balance, because this is a new fund to Taos County. This is again our historic high cash balance in this one fund. We did experience a small increase in expenditures due to the fact that now our E911 department is now fully funded by staffing personnel. We have next our E911 revenue page, which captures the detail from prior year and current year where we are right now, and you'll see the influx of the GR2 that has now been coming into Taos County. Before the end of third quarter or during the beginning of fourth quarter, I will have to adjust the revenue accordingly. Yes, no?
Mr. Chairman, are we using the three increments?
We are. So as I mentioned earlier, I will have to adjust the budget because when I established the budget during the 18th cycle, I only allocated for county GRT. Now we're receiving food and medical allocations too, so I will adjust the budget to allocate revenue for those two GRT increments coming into Taos County.
But the E911, are we incrementing the tax, the three increments?
The three increments, we are. We did. The next page is our activity for the expenditures for the enhanced E911 fund and you'll see that's where we have the increase in our full-time positions, which is slightly, and we have maintained an overall cash balance a little bit higher than our last year's fiscal year of $356,000. Our next major fund I'll go over quickly is our Senior Citizens Fund. Again, this is a new fund to Taos County. We don't have the historical years for five years back because we've only had this program since the onset of 2016. Taos County started off this year with a $160,000 cash balance. We have received revenue of $355,000 from our state aging. We have expenditures pretty much comparable to last year, the amount of $370,000, and Taos County General Fund has contributed its county match to this program in the amount of $42,365, leaving us with an ending cash balance of $188,773.47, which is an all-time cash high for this fund.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about that.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Seven dollars and 50 cents an hour is being paid to.
Yes.
Transportation drivers. I'd like to see that visited in our budget if we can add some more money to increase their seven dollars and 50 cents an hour to drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. Taos County enters into a near-day contract with their senior employment program, which is a sub-branch of the New Mexico eighteen and long-term services division. Taos County has to pay the minimum wage of either the federal or the state minimum wage, whichever is higher for these drivers, their senior employee program. So it's a program based, Taos County does sign a contract for this and it is the rate that we have to pay them.
We can add something to that.
Are they compensated from somewhere else?
So that's the reason why they're senior employees is because they're entitled to receive their social security benefits and this allows them to receive their social security benefits without being touched, reduced, or taken away and it allows them to have some kind of gain-forwarded employment. So that's the reason why they're paid that wage.
Mr. Chairman.
Clerk Colerole. They also, at times, are allowed to keep their para-retirees. That's one of our two exceptions, if they go through the process to continue to collect that para. We would like to look at potentially giving a little bit more to the senior program because of the three-year longevity that our staff here receive this year, so quite likely, general fund will have to put a little bit more into it, but those are contractual obligations for us, we can't go above those contractual obligations.
Would that be something could be changed to the state level or federal level or?
That name comes from Title III, the older Americans, absolutely have to be a federal initiative.
All right, thank you.
The next steps that we do have are summary units for our contractual obligations for the senior program. Again, we have five components of this program. We have the congregate, the home-delivered, the transportation, the home maker, and the rest of it here. So Taos County contracts during year certain units that have to be satisfied in order for us to be reimbursed by the state. Taos County is about halfway there, about 47.85% as far as the contracted units being reimbursed to this county. Then I do have the detail of the revenue that has come in, again comparing it to prior fiscal year, and then I have the expenditure reports for the congregate, the home-delivered, the transportation, the home maker, and the rest of it for your review. Our next major fund is our detention fund. Our detention fund, again, I have provided courtesy, the last five years of historical data, all through the period ending December 31st. So right now, Taos County received about 3.18% increase in revenue attributed to the contract that we have in place now for the Taos pebble and our expenditures have gone down about 1%. Taos County started off in the detention fund with a cash balance of $604,000. We received revenue so far year-to-date of the calendar, $7,000. Our expenses are a little over a million dollars. Taos County has transferred $600,000 from the general fund into this fund, leaving us with an ending cash balance of about $55,000. The next slide is the revenue for the adult detention and juvenile detention, and then the next slide is the detail, expenditure detail for the adult detention, and the next slide is the juvenile detention expenditures as well. Moving on to our major funds, our solid waste fund is one of our enterprise funds. Again, you have the five years of historical data all ending December 31st. Taos County started off with a historic high in this fund of $196,000. Our revenues decreased about 5% only because of the franchise fees that were collected last year, a little bit in excess, and our expenditures have decreased about 2% only because last year at December 31st, Taos County did pay for a permanent fence at the Olacalita transfer station and were able to purchase one of these, leaving us with an ending cash balance as of December 31st of $148,000 in this fund. Then you have the detail and that's where you will see the notation made from prior year. Taos County did receive in our franchise fees about $90,000 last year and this year it's about $67,000. $67,000 is our norm. What would happen in the 16, 18, 17 budget cycle, Taos County received franchise payments at the end of the fiscal year that got posted into a new fiscal year, so that's the variance there. Taos County, if you look at the, towards the middle of the column, the landfill user fees, you will see last year, December 31st, 2016, Taos County had received $368,000. This year we have received $380,000. So the quarterly billing mentioned earlier basically has been the seamless transition to quarterly billing. Taos County revenue has continued to come in accordingly. You next have the detail of the operating budget for the solid waste department and then the operating budget for the solid waste administration department, leaving us with a cash balance of the $148,000. Our next enterprise fund is our EMS fund. Again, have the five years of historical data, starting off this year with an all-time historic cash high balance of $315,000. Taos County did receive a decrease in EMS from last fiscal year to this fiscal year only because of a payment in PoliCost Hospital was paid last year and this year is the year we don't receive that payment, so that's the attributing decrease for this revenue fund. Our expenditures have increased about 10% due to the staffing that we've had to hire on board and the 18 operatings for the EMS department. Our next fund equals, the next slide, I mean, is our revenue and that's where you will see that the $140,000 payment last year was made and this year that payment is not due to the county, but you will see that the intake fees from prior year to current year have increased by $10,000. So that would be the change in revenue in that fund. Our EMS ambulance has two funds, the Taos ambulance and then we have the substation and the Panas ambulance. They both have an operating budget and the detail has been provided. I will go over some other funds and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Our first fund is our administrative complex. This is our excess fund. Taos County, this year started off with a little bit lower than last year, about a million dollars. We did receive a little bit more revenue, 510 versus the 475,000 from last year, leaving us with a cash balance of 1.3. During the commission meeting in December, Taos County did authorize us to do a prepayment for one of our leases that we had in place, so this will reduce the cash balance. By the time we get our third quarter, it should be closer to the $900,000 mark. In our lodgers tax promotional fund, the revenue remains unchanged. Last year in December 31st, Taos County had received $74,900. Now we receive $75,900, so it's basically been stable. We do have some operating expenses that have hit and we have paid a little bit more sub ground recipients this fiscal year than last fiscal year, leaving us with a cash balance in the promotional fund of $92,000.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Did we sign a contract with B&amp;B, Airbnb?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, we did do a franchise agreement.
And so will that money be seen here? We started to receive the revenue for that and we did deposit it accordingly. Where would you see it?
It would be in the lodger's tax.
Under the 31?
31,300.
We haven't differentiated the revenue specifically to Airbnb, we just lumped it all as lodger's tax.
So that, did that change any? When did we get that contract?
We started receiving revenue in December, November, October?
Octobers when we signed it. I believe we got our first payment in November and I have not, I had the opportunity to check with the clerk's offices what our latest receipt was on that.
I just want to point out there's an issue with the Airbnb and they are using zip codes instead of county-town boundaries, and this is an issue that somebody needs to check into because if they use a zip code and they give that money to the town, we're losing it. So we have to find, let them know where our boundaries are. So we have to find, let them know where our boundaries are and make adjustments if they can't be dispersing according to zip code. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you, and as a courtesy, I did provide our management team with the courtesy of the breakdown of the lodger's tax so we can see the lodging establishments that are contributing to Taus County, and I did a three-year comparison. So we have the average compared to historical data also received by Taus County. Aside from our promotional fund, Taus County also has the non-promotional fund, which also is funded from the lodger's tax. Taus County started off this fund with $99,000. Again, the revenue has been stable. Last year, $112,000, to this year, we received $113,000, leaving us with an ending cash balance in our non-promotional fund of $93,000. Our recreation fund is funded from our lodger's tax as well. As of December 31st, Taus County has transferred $20,000 from our lodger's tax into our recreation fund, which funds a salary of one position, leaving us with a cash balance of $389,000. Keeping in mind that this fund isn't designed to have a cash balance, so we're pretty much right in line with any cash balances for fund balance in the recreation fund. Our next major fund that we have is our healthcare assistance fund. Taus County started off this fund with $2.8 million versus the 2.7 last year. The revenue has been slightly disrupted due to an increment that hasn't been intercepted from our state. We have a call-in, Taus County will be calling the state to verify the state intercept, why it hasn't been coming. So last year, Taus County received $778,000. This year, Taus County has received the $504,000 in revenue. Last year's expenses in this fund were $719,000. This year, they're $515,000, leaving us with an ending cash balance of $2.79 million. Our capital fund, as mentioned earlier, has provided Taus County with the opportunity to enter into some arch восприятие this year in the first and second quarter. Taus County expenditures have been about $1.6 million through December 31st, whereas last year, we only spent the $576,000. In this fund, Taus County has $750,000 remaining to pursue any capital purchases that have been pending or earmarked to before fiscal year-end. Notice, no revenue has been deposited into this because the revenue deposited into this fund is the pill, and the pill won't come to Taus County until the end of the fiscal year. In our capital fund, we also have two sub-funds that are part of this fund. We have our treasures admin fee fund, and we have our employee wellness fund, both with healthy cash balances compared to prior year. The next slide is a courtesy illustration of our GRTs. So what I've done is I've narrowed down the increment, the percentages. So you'll see that there, you'll see the breakdown. The new increment is toward the middle, where we don't have any activity for '16 or '17. But we do have activity for our E911 fund. And that's where you'll see that I don't have anything budgeted for food and medical. But by the time third quarter or fourth quarter comes, I will adjust the budget to allocate revenue accordingly. If you look at the bottom percentile mark, we're about 51% of the GRTs. Even though the GRTs come into the county are slightly lower, we did budget accordingly, so that's why our budget's pretty much in line. We did take into account the decreases from prior year that Mr. Chairman liked to manage.
You just said GRTs are down slightly. Could you expand on that, please?
So during the legislative session, there was the finance committee. They presented some handouts. I have those handouts available if you'd like for your review. It's basically an economic outlook. And so they do, they take the historical data for the last three years, and they provide the industry breakdowns by county. And so ours is down slightly. But the budget is in line with the budget. Does that make sense?
Mr. Corlo. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, as I have mentioned in the past, we did have a pretty high watermark last year, the multiple projects, one-time projects, the late, the airport remediation at the mine, we're seeing the counter. However, we did budget accordingly. We never budget based on actuals of what we receive. We budget based on what we are truly projecting to receive. So we're right on track with our budget, but overall, GRT receipts are down.
Do we have an idea, 1%, 2%, 5%, how much they're down?
I believe the other C numbers are around 3%.
They were about 3%.
Okay, thank you.
As part of our report to the commission, Taus County also has to compare our quarterly report to our DFA. So our DFA report is attached. We did have an investment committee that was held on January 29th. So looking at this page, I know it's very small on the screen, but if you're looking at the bottom totals, then it is very small to see. But Taus County had cash of $30 million, and we had investments of $5 million. Total cash and investments for Taus County was $35 million. The revenue through December 31st was 18.9, and this is the bottom lines. Then the expenditures on the bottom were $14,767, leaving Taus County with a fund balance of $39,225,990. This report has been sent off and has been presented in detail during our investment committee meeting that was held January 29th, conducted by our treasurer. Who would like a few minutes now to address with you her investment report? And then this would conclude my presentation when she's done.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, and you in audience. I have decided that I am going to present my investment committee meeting report on the 13th of March as a separate item.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. So at this time, I hereby request approval of our 2017-18 fiscal year's second quarter report.
Pleasure, but Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. I'm always very impressed with the kind of work that you and your staff do. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I do have a motion to approve the 2017-18 fiscal year final budget, second quarter financial review. And I have a second discussion. Commissioner Blinken.
The one twelfth equal these days?
We were looking at the margin the other day on the increment to the 1/12. What was the average in top? 500?
Yeah, to under 500, I want to say four eighty-ish. Are you asking about the reserve? What, oh, I'm asking, not the, what you just gave us was a GRT. Number, what, 1/12 would equal in revenues?
I have the rates.
About $500,000. Is what? My 12th equal? So the required reserves are 3/12 of 1.23 million, so.
I'll provide a courtesy copy for our clerk's, but that is an analysis that we do keep track of the reserve balances. But we do have in mind, keeping in mind that now for our third quarter, Taus County has some larger expenses planned. We do have to pay the insurance authority some multi-line and our non-forcemental allocations, which are close to a million dollars. Taus County does also have set aside $3.5 million to cover payroll with the General Fund, and averages about $275,000. Times 13 pay periods remaining in the fiscal year is about $3.5 million. Taus County also has to remember that we have the contract in place for aging for our senior center. That allocation grant to the county is about $1.2 million, and that will also come from our General Fund cash balance of the transfer.
Chairman, it's a garbage profit, is it paid off?
That's been paid off.
410,000?
410,000 is 1/12 for grocery use tax.
No, two up in terms of reserves, based on the budget expenditures.
So, Mr. Chairman, to be clear, we have $9.8 million in excess cash. And 4 million of that are invested, is that correct? I mean, can you kind of break down again?
Well, that report's going to be good.
Can I just go to the last picture so you can see the detail of our investments for Taus County? Also recorded requirement to DFA. Okay, so this is the breakdown. This is where we have the $5 million invested. And so of the $5 million, 3.25 is from the General Fund. We have a million dollars invested from our indigenous fund. And then we have $750,000 invested from our 411 fund. Totalling $5 million.
So that would mean we excess cash free and clear about $5 million out of the, almost $10 million? I guess, I'm just trying to see what leeway we have for spending for roads. But what I'm hearing is we don't really, we're doing too many projects and we can't just get them done. But what's the free and clear amount? That's what I'm trying to get at.
So right now, we subtract out the obligations that Taus County owes for second and third and fourth quarter. We've been $3.5 million for payroll alone. And we have the insurance authority bills that are upcoming, $10 million. Then we have the obligations that Taus County has entered into for the grant agreements for the senior program for all these other grants that we just approved today. Allocation matches from cash. Taus County still has a sufficient balance. And so, Mr. Corlo, during our financial planning of our '18, '19 final budget, we'll be working on some projects upcoming.
So tell me the bottom line here again. We've got four months to play with. Do you know, what is it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. Traditionally, that's the high-water mark for the county in December 31st. We already do not have that much left. We've already expended some going into the third quarter. As Ms. Martinez mentioned, there's a lot of obligations right out there. Free and clear is probably $2 to $3 million. We did put into our budget this year our best five of reserve balances under request for some money for our veteran cemetery, our historic county courthouse project. I'll be asking the commission to move that money officially into capital projects soon, so that we can start spending through the summer. We do have more than we had in the past, but we do have big outstanding obligations. So the 1.2 million for the senior building has to be fronted by the county before we start reimbursing for that. So that's money that will be free and clear again in the future, but we need to opiate it. And so it's not necessarily free and clear right now. That's why it's kind of a difficult question to answer.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Effectively, your original question is 3/12 is about $3 million. 12 is about $1 million, right? So we got about nine 12s right now. I understand that it's not, you've got about six 12s. Right?
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. Part of the world.
Commissioner Omer?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blinken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigos?
Yes.
Chairman Thumber?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. We'll wait for Susan's report for the next meeting. Item B is Tax Evaluation Protest Board Memorandum for majority vote on the replacement alternate to fill the vacancy and complete the term left by Beth Pittman. Mr. Corlo.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, basically, we have lost one of our alternates for the valuation protest board. And according to New Mexico State Statute 7-3-25, Section C, vacancies occurring on the board shall be filled by the according AP original appointment and shall be for the unexpired term of vacated membership. Beth Pittman is no longer able to serve on the valuation board protest, and in order to fill her vacancy and complete her term, the following three people have been nominated. We did receive nominations for Mr. Rudy Abeta, Mr. Arvino Martinez, and Mr. Amos Khan. So at this time, I'd like to request to the board of founding commissioners a vote on each of these individuals. And I would like to be able to appoint, or to put the name that is chosen into the resolution that you'll be looking at as the next action, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, agree with him? And because of the fact, Mr. Corlo, that they're always looking for alternates, can these other, whoever is not successful through the voting process today, they, since they've shown interest, obviously, for putting themselves up there, and they'll just be kept as fill-in alternates? Because they're my looking into this.
Mr. Chairman, unofficially, yes, we can do that. We can kind of put them in the hopper. As I understand it, officially, we can only have this slate as predetermined by the statute. And so at this time, we only need to officially appoint one alternate. But I do understand what you're asking. And I think it'd be fair, the rest of the board agrees that the second choice today be our first unofficial alternate.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Donnell.
This term expires when?
You voted originally for this last March, so I believe the term expires next March.
So in 2019?
I believe so.
Okay, and can you tell us who the current members are? I know there's Penny Wardlaw, there's... Could you please give us the names of who currently serves? Harvey?
Morning, Randy.
Harvey Blaustein?
Yes, it's Harvey Blaustein. You have Penny Wardlaw and Maria Villalda.
And I'm wondering if, Mr. Chairman, if, with your permission, if we could each discuss our nominations? So we each have an idea of who we are.
I know three of them at school, two of them used to race cars in Seattle, wasn't it? Illegal. He's not that good.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Abeta and Mr. Martinez, and they're both involved with real estate agents. And I know Mr. Abeta does the prisons and stuff like that. What type of experience does Mr. Khan have?
Yes, I will tell you that. And looking at the statute, it does say a mix of realtors and a mix of at-large members. Right now, the current board is heavily on the real estate. The statute read, "One member, one alternate shall be a qualified elector of the county." "One member, one alternate shall be a qualified elector of the county, demonstrated field of evaluation of property," and blah, blah, blah. So you've got three that fit the item two of the statute, 7-38-25. Currently have none that are alternate. Mr. Khan has been in business 34 years. He's had some experience with protest. He wanted to know if he had to do his homework for this Friday protest meeting, and the statute doesn't allow that. But so he's eager to serve. And I would ask that, given the current membership of the board, that we allow Amos Khan to be the alternate. He's been in business 34 years. He lives in my district. He's a savvy business guy, and he's willing to serve. So I'd like to see the composition of this board balance out. I think if we, all these other guys are very qualified, I'm sure. But I think it would be good to have someone from the public represented on this protest.
So in the form of a motion, Commissioner O'Donnell is asking that we consider Mr. Khan. Wait here a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Corlo.
Commissioner Omer?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blinken?
No.
Vice Chair Geigos?
No.
Chairman Thumber?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be first, so the ranking between, I guess if they need somebody else, we can get a hold of Mr. Abeta or Mr. Martinez, and we'll go through that. Okay? So that's, vice is that. Which brings us to item 12, is approval of Resolution 2018-9, Resolution amending Resolution 2017-19, appointing a new alternate to Taus County Valuation Protest. The name to be inserted into Resolution 2018-9 will be Mr. Amos Khan. Pleasure, the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval of Resolution number 2018-9, a resolution amending Resolution 2017-19, finding a new alternate to the Taus County Valuation Protest Board.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. I'll lower.
Commissioner Omer?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blinken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigos?
Yes.
Chairman Thumber?
Yes. Thank you.
It's getting very complicated, and it's sort of easy to answer. So Randy, will someone with your staff get a hold of Khan and tell him what they need to do, or whatever they, your, thanks, Randy. Next item is item 13, County Manager's Report Matters. He will give a short update to the county commission on various items affecting Taus County. Mr. Corlo, hi.
Hi. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I think first, let's Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think first on the agenda, I had attached a code of ethics that our management team has been working on over the last probably year, year and a half. It's a draft that I feel as a management team we're comfortable with. I just wanted to introduce it to the Board of Commissioners for your review and any inputs. And you'll come back at a future meeting in the form of a resolution to be adopted. So by all means, if there's any concern, any requests, any ideas, feel free to reach out to me or Mr. Arvino and we'll incorporate those.
If this is passed, Mr. Portillo, I'd like to see a signature page for all of their signatures. They'd be proud and we would post them along with the ones that we have at this commission done, which I'd like to see as at some point reaffirmed in the very near future. So, go ahead. Thank you. Okay.
Moving on, I wanted to inform the Board, RFP that's carrying out for Los Corlos Bridge Reconstruction. We've talked about this project for a while. It's been in development for a few years. At this point, we're trying to time it out with the end of school. We all know Los Corlos Road is a very easily traveled road, and we're basically going to be shutting down the road for about three months to reconstruct that bridge. That bridge is one of the, it is the top priority for the county in terms of connected maintenance. And because of the time it's taken for us to address this, the cost has gone up. So I just wanted to inform the Board, we're going to be doing a PR campaign on this based on the actual award of the RFP. So when we get to that point where we know who the contractor will be, we're going to follow it up with a PR campaign and start informing the residents of that area that that road will be closed, using Citi Road as an alternative throughout. We're going to do our best to have that ready and prepared for the citizens that need to use it. So our goal is to not interrupt plus travel with the school. So if we can start the project, like actually start the deconstruction as soon as school is out, we anticipate being able to be complete and ready by the time school's back in at the end of the summer. So we also are preparing for release of RFP on our teeny healthcare. That's a pretty important RFP that will be going out really soon here. I think this is the next week or two. And so just wanted to inform the Board on those two RFPs. Moving on, our legislative recap, more specifically to Cap Raulay. I know a lot of you were able to attend different events or different meetings throughout the legislative session, so I'm sure each of you have your own report to give, but I'm going to be specific to Cap Raulay. We're all aware of our requests. We didn't receive all of that, all that we requested. In fact, all that we did yet was $50,000 for Camino de Medio repair. And we received another $73,800 for our veteran cemetery projects. Very grateful for both of those appropriations. We'll make the most out of it. One thing to mention on the Camino de Medio project is we have reached out to the engineer that the town had hired, Sodder Miller. And we're moving forward with separating that project into a county specific and a town specific. So the town will be moving forward with Sodder Miller to basically talk about the engineering that's already been completed and potentially scaling it back a little bit so that we can actually achieve the project. What was positive about the engineering was a lot of need for proper drainage buildup in certain areas and a little bit of property acquisition around the Chamisa intersection. So we intend to continue to push with that in engineering, but we may scale back on some of the things like sidewalks, crewing, but there are things that may not be as necessary throughout the entire project.
Commissioner, so does the town still plan to move forward with their initiative? Or are they?
They're going to coverize their side.
So yeah, I'm not necessarily be sure. As I understand it, they're not going to be following the engineering plans by the spec either. So they have all their alternatives. I don't know exactly what those plans are.
Is it possible to have a board commission or somehow get a court presentation from these to what they planned to do with the area, Mr. Chairman?
To the town?
Yeah.
I guess we could make the request of Mr. Espinoza to give their final, but I know they're still in the development. He said the idea, they're not exactly sure, but spoke to him about the landfill.
I thought that we were all on the same page a few years ago, obviously.
At this point, it just seems like it'd be most beneficial for the county to automate our own and to actually achieve the goal of getting that road improved. That road is pretty bad in certain areas. We know that, and we're going to do our best to do temporary fixes. That will only help to the final fix. So we'll be working on some of those issues through the spring and summer while we continue to coddle together the money to do an overage from our boundary to the town.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
So the curbs and bike lanes, all that stuff is beyond budget at this point?
It looks like it. Obviously, I can't say that without the help of the engineer coming out of engineers. So that's why we're reaching out to Sodder Miller, who's been all over the preliminary design and see where we can potentially look at some scaling back.
The bike lane was eliminated, Commissioner, because it ended up as a dead end. And so with the bike lane, that's with State Road 68 improvements, things would be directed prior to Chamisa Road or at Chamisa Road now that we've paved it to go back up and tie into the bike lane at 68, which would take you all the way to UNEM and places south. So sort of having a redundant bike lane that ran into nothing because then get that mess to hold her. It was going to be incorporated anyway to flow into the New York State Road 68.
Right. We really need bike lanes that could very well, but that's not on the agenda. And, but yeah. The, what, the customization is they build it and then they, what, it becomes like a chip seal thing?
The program that the town has spent, I believe, $3 million over the last couple of years in going through the residential streets. And it lasts pretty, back in the day, in the eighties and nineties, the town did a lot of color work and had a pretty aggressive road plan. And they're pretty much doing the same thing now. They've, you've got a pretty good bang for your buck, I think.
So it's an asphalt finish?
Yes.
It's something that we're looking to, Mr. Arvino, is attempting some preliminary work into looking into that and ideas how we could potentially utilize it going forward to. Moving on to our next topic, Amigos Bravo's had a meeting with us earlier in the week. They, as an organization, are exploring green infrastructure projects. And they came and they approached the county to see if we had anything that would fit. In that context, they want to actually give us $10,000 to supplement one of our projects with the green component. In our discussion, we identified a couple areas that needed to be addressed. One, Los Fongos Road along the river, there's some issues there. But the project that they seem to be most interested in was one we presented to you guys back in the fall, I believe, in regards to correcting the drainage issues we have here at the end of All Right. We don't have proper drainage right now as it stands, and they would like to be able to help us with that. So if they could, they would like to try and see how we can get some of that drainage water into other areas to be used for green infrastructure. We did look at the vacant area over here on the other side of All Right, and ironically ran into a landscape architect from the NMDOT who was looking at that same property for a potential bioswelle as part of the 68 project. So it may have been the perfect project in the sense that we're all working kind of towards the same goal of creating a green infrastructure area with, you know, greenery and feeding it with runoff water or any kind of secondary water source. So we'll continue to explore that and see if our engineer who designed this project can talk to the Amigos Bravo's engineer and see if we can really tie it all together. Their main goal was to try and spend that money relatively quickly, and that's a project that we have teed up that we believe we can accomplish before the end of fiscal year. So just wanted to bring that. Very rarely do I get anyone coming and asking to give us money. So it was pretty exciting to sit down and see how we could take their money and put it into good use. Our next subject, UNEM Taos has approached the county, and I've mentioned this in the past about daycare, but they're looking forward real soon from the county to see if we would be willing to commit the Filibato Building. The town in Taos did remove the reversion clause from the deed for the Filibato Center. So at the request of the commission, I sent the letter back and obvious that's been completed. It's now ours no matter what we use it for. But UNEM Taos is requesting a commitment because the town will only commit to them in the short term if they have a long-term commitment from the county. So we're going to look at that a little bit more, explore opportunities, and then I'll bring that back in a future meeting to allow the Board the opportunity to vote if they would like to see that commitment.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
So I think it is a good idea. However, do we have to meet procurement and put an RFP out to bid on that project? If there's other uses like substance abuse, homeless, I mean, you know, do we need to properly vet all the other options for that building?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, if they're willing to pay us fair market value, no, we do not need to do RFP. We can, as a landlord, rent lease to anybody that's willing to pay us fair market value. If we intended to give it out with a zero sum or $1 a year, these type of things, then we absolutely do need to RFP it, and then we need to get something in return for that consideration that we should be receiving in fair market value.
And do they open up to county employees too?
Yes, they can guarantee every county employee will have the opportunity, but they are looking at how they can guarantee a certain number of spots specific for county employees on that daycare. So the other very positive component in some discussions with our senior senators is the opportunity potentially to cross generations and do senior programming with the daycare individuals, the kids, and vice versa. I personally believe that's a very strong learning tool to get the generations communicating and understanding each other. So that would be a great opportunity potentially because of the location of our new building and where Filibato currently is. It's also a great location near the schools. And so, you know, the schools, Kit Carson, there's some major employers nearby that would all potentially take advantage of that as well. And then the last thing I want to bring up today, we had talked at our last meeting about moving our second March meeting to March 27. However, there is potentially a conflict with the NMAC regional meetings. Our regional meeting is scheduled that same day in Las Vegas, New Mexico. So I would like to request to the Board to move that March 27 meeting potentially to Thursday, March 22 with an accompanying work study. I would like that to be our work study. We'll do our best to keep the agenda to a minimum, action items to a minimum so that we can only get into the discussion of a work study that afternoon.
Thursday, the 22nd?
Yes.
And trial, let me, let me get it moved.
Can I make a request to the Board to authorize the moving of the 20, meeting of March 27 to Thursday, March 22 with an accompanying work study?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and a second to move our regular scheduled meeting from, hold on a second. From March 27 to the morning of March 22. Keep in mind, if there's any public hearings at that time, we have time to change the format. No public hearings will be before 10:00 from that time forward. So on that, that meeting date, so we have motion and a second, 27 to the 22nd. Clerk of the world.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Thunberg?
Yes. That's all I have, Commissioners, after the questions.
Commissioner, Commissioner O'Donnell?
One thought that I have, constantly traveling through Pilat to Espinola and Santa Fe, Mexico Gas Company project, they're doing an awesome job. I believe they're, they're almost done with the pipeline connection that they have. Just kind of wondering is what the plan is, if there is one to bring the highway surface up to the condition that it used to be or better. I was wondering if maybe you could, Mr. Chairman, write a letter?
We would have to get a hold of Tim Cortez.
Yeah. And maybe get a report, live report from them, what's going to happen next. I know that the actual hookup is not going to take place till the middle part of March, I think the 11th or so. And that's going to be interesting to see how that goes. But overall, I think they've done a really good job with.
So what you're saying is it's going to be a really cold March 11th?
It's probably with snow. No, actually, they do have a plan to keep gas going.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll follow up with that and see if maybe we can get another presentation from New Mexico Gas. And I was just informed, unfortunately, March 22nd, we have already committed the chambers in the morning for state eye roll training. Would the commission be willing to do an afternoon meeting? The chambers is available in the afternoon, or would you rather do another day in the morning?
Can I have a courthouse, a little courthouse?
It's dark in there. And they have to, my sound is.
Will we get the light in, John?
I'll have to go to the afternoon meeting. Yeah, that'd be.
I can.
You can?
Those have to work.
I think we could do the historic county courthouse.
Damn, we're down here.
The, damn, you want to move them to the state?
Well, we've got to see if they've already, it's the state auditor's office. We've got to see if they've already sent that.
And then they need to overdo it.
Let us follow up on that and give you guys.
That's okay. I mean, I can be there until 2:30.
Okay. Okay, March 22nd then is a date, potentially in the afternoon. Otherwise, we'll see what we can, just stay around and keep you guys in the morning. I'll keep you informed, follow up.
So we just can talk a lot.
Yeah.
Thinking of the courthouse.
Yes.
Did you get in motion to get those lights up? And maybe we could get them up by 22nd?
We certainly had the discussion with the heritage associated group, but we're waiting to do that as part of the overall construction. It would be kind of counterproductive to put them up now just to take them back down as we do actual construction.
And they agreed that they can move off.
What they're going to do is purchase the equipment. We're going to buy the equipment. We're going to take the donation of their equipment. So they're going to purchase what we're requesting of them, and then they're going to just give that to the county, and we'll accept that as a donation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on the NMAC district meeting, what time does that start in Las Vegas? Where?
It starts at 10:00 AM. I believe it's at High End University. I will forward you the email committee to see the details, and I'll send that to the entire board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Mr. Chairman, a real quick question, also the honor with regards to the DC trip. What, what do you have in plan for that?
We intend to go over our packets, I believe, one day this next week. So we have worked on putting together expenditures associated with our Title III money, our secure schools funding. So we certainly have proposed a lot of packet specific to that. And then we also have a couple other projects we'd like to talk to them about, including Historic County Courthouse. I didn't neglect to mention, we had a pretty good meeting earlier in the week with DFA Local Government Grant to Regroupus about the idea of CBG specific to the ADA issues. And it does look promising for the county. We're going to continue forward with that. But that's unfortunate news regarding the historical preservation grant. We are not considered a national historic building. We're not on a national level of that one, the state level. So that may, it may not allow us to be able to apply for that money funding. We're still pursuing it, but it doesn't look as promising as it did when we thought we were a national registered.
So please include the agenda of the bridge because that may qualify for flat money for the cleanup.
So we'll definitely mention CBG as a priority to our congressmen and our senators because that does help a lot when they help us prioritize that. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, I have 14 commissioners' reports and matters. I would like to ask, I don't know how many of us are going to attend the meeting on Saturday, Commissioner O'Donnell, from 1:00 to 4:30, the Democratic County Convention will be at the Taos Mesa Brewery from 1:00 to 4:30. So I planned to attend party that I know Commissioner O'Donnell and Casey, so can we post a possible form for that at that time? On Saturday, the 24th. I have nothing else of new business or, what do you think, Commissioner?
Go ahead.
I just have, I will not be attending the meeting in the sixth.
Sixth? Okay.
Well, we don't have a commission meeting. We moved it to the 13th because of your election and just, the clerk's staff is very busy that day.
Okay.
So we're.
Okay, so I don't have to ask the commissioners?
All right. So we can't talk about you then? Anything else, Commissioners, here we?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Okay, Commissioner Odom.
Wanted to give a brief report, I went to the NPR TPO meeting, they had a presentation on the census. Census in 2020 will be done mostly online, so they are recommending county chair, create a committee to make sure we have in place broadband, internet, a plan to reach people as we know, not many.
That's our responsibility.
Well, yeah, they're asking us to mobilize because if for every 1% undercounted, the state loses 600 million. So last year, 2% were undercounted, we lost 1.2 billion. So the motivating factor here is we need to make sure we have people counted in the county, otherwise it's going to affect our federal funding. Yes, they did say that we begin to mobilize in 2019. Like for instance, I want to make sure the Minasco Community Center still has broadband or we need to start talking, how are we going to reach these people that don't have internet? It's going to be a huge problem. It's a one-page new census and it's just something to think about for the future. Could be a potential loss for us if we don't organize how we're going to reach out to people. They will not be going door to door unless they can't find you. So again, you know, making sure we have our rural addressing as beefed up as we can before 2020, you know, we don't miss people who don't have addresses. I think it's just something we need to think about to plan for the future. I did want to say on the legislative appropriations as a whole, unless the governor vetoes, we got over 1 million in the county per se. I was happy to see a small amount to the Los Trumpas Mutual Water Domestic Group for 37 for their water repairs. That area has a problem with uranium in the water. That is part of the San Juan Basin. It is the very tip, so there's a lot of oil and gas reserves and issues. So I hope the governor doesn't veto any of the Taus County appropriations. As you know, Senate Memorial 103 on the bridge passed. Anybody needs a copy, they can send that. It was very well written. Senator Sisnetos attached 30,000 to continue the studies. Let's hope the governor doesn't veto that. That was in amendments to House Bill 2. Included in that was also money from the DA, they get 100,000 for a new staffer, they get money for a vehicle and there was 300,000 for Rio Reba Taus substance abuse, but I understand most of that money is going to go to Rio Reba. However, that doesn't mean we can't fight for it. It'll be, I guess, allocated to Human Services Behavioral Health. The goal was to, I guess, for Oi, but it did say in the bill, 300,000 for Rio Reba Taus, so I still think it's worth fighting for some of that money. The other thing you may not be aware of is HB 69 gives us all races, gives county clerk, all elected officials a race. And let's, I don't think the governor will be to that effective on the next term. So that was nice, that was good news. And then the other thing to watch is the Metro redevelopment act that Senator Sisnetos sponsored that passed, SB 95. That is changing the language that allows all counties to go after CBD funds and bonds and you create a redevelopment area. It opens up more economic development opportunities in that we can go for bond money and they added language that includes creative industries. So that's kind of what we need in the rural areas, our businesses opening up for creative industries. So that SB 95 has a lot of potential for augmenting economic development. So I just wanted to mention some of the highlights and we just hope we see all these line item capital outlay and various projects that pass through the governor's desk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is, this is a little bit of the, run down that, Commissioner Odom, Commissioner from District, Vice Chair Gago. That 300,000 is a pilot program. Anyway, if Oi gets any of that, maybe we can move our discussions with him about having a decuss. I don't know, Mr. Cortez, if you know anything about that 300 grand, whether or not the governor is going to veto it, but if we can just keep an eye on it, it may be a possible. It may give us another option of doing what we tried to do a year or so. Thank you.
Any other announcements, Commissioner? Okay, moving on the agenda, item 15, Taus County Board of Commissioners make convenient closed session on the following three items. Item A is discussion regarding top of the world litigation. This matter may be discussed in executive session or open meetings at exemption. 10-15-1H, which allows for discussion of purchase, acquisition and disposal of real property for water rights by the public. And A B is discussion regarding possible potential litigation in the state of Mexico versus Purdue Pharma LP et al. Opoyo addiction matter. These matters may be discussed in executive session under open meetings at exemption. 10-15-1H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Item C is discussion regarding Taus Health Systems Inc. Police. This matter may be discussed in executive session or open meetings at exemption. 10-15-1H8, which allows for discussion of purchase, acquisition, for disposal of real property for water rights by the public. At this time, Commissioner, then attain a motion to go into closed session.
So move, Mr. Chairman, second.
Motion and a second, clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes, we are now in closed session.
Please hear the. Commissioners, motion to come back into session.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to come back into open session. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ravi, would you give a report as to what was discussed during our closed session time?
Mr. Chair of Commissioners, there were three items discussed as noticed on the items to be discussed in closed session. It was the top of the world litigation, potential litigation on pharmaceutical issue and then an update on the issues with the lease on Bolicross Hospital. And each of those matters was discussed and no action was taken in closed session.
Commissioners, I entertain a motion to accept Mr. Ravi's report.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion and second, clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, under 16A, there's the possibility of consideration and decision regarding top of the world litigation. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing none. Moving on to item B, consideration and decision regarding the possible litigation in the state of Mexico versus Purdue Pharma LP et al. And the Opoyo addiction matter. Is there any ratification from the commission at this time? Commissioner Blakenhart?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to instruct staff to issue a RFP to represent Taus County in the litigation itemized in the agenda.
Okay. I will second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second to instruct the manager to issue an RFP for legal matters on the agenda item 16B. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Odom?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Next item is item 17, adjournment.
So move.
Second, Mr. Chairman, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thanks, Abby. Thanks, Francis.